How do I do that? Oh, up here.
Again, we welcome you as you come on. It is 6:30. I'm Barbara Lee Van Horson. I'm the experimenter at the Momentum Center, Grassroots Movement to Create a Stigma-Free Community. And I want to welcome you to our Town Hall on Racism and the Justice System. You see before you, the members of the Anti-Racism Task Force, all of the organizations that are represented. And then there's another 10 or 12 individuals in addition to each of those organizations. I do need to start with a warning because we have been hacked before. One of our very first town halls, we had some bad players in the room. And it took us a while to be able to get them out of the room. We have all of the pieces of registration in place to try to make sure that doesn't happen. But if somebody goes through all of the required registration processes, then there is no way for us to know for sure that they're not going to follow the rules. So we do have people, including Brian Wheeler, running security. So if somebody shows up and tries to hijack the meeting, we will get them removed as soon as possible and continue our meeting. But I did want to give that warning because it was pretty traumatic. And I don't want anybody to be completely blindsided by that should it recur. And again, we have no reason to think it will. It hasn't since. And we were able with the police assistance to track down where that came from, which was also good news. So again, we have convened the Anti-Racism Task Force. And we are committed to doing a year-long series on race and racism, at least a year, and then we'll be reevaluating. And we're starting a three-month series tonight on racism and the justice system, particularly focusing on the first aspect, mass incarceration and the school-to-prison pipeline. Again, these are the organizations in your community that are part of the Anti-Racism Task Force. So hopefully, as you interact with people in these organizations, you can thank them for their commitment to this really important work. One of the things that the task force has done, we plan these meetings, but we also look for action plans. It's really about collecting information at the grassroots. And one of the things we do is look for suggestions from the grassroots. And one of the suggestions was to make a video out of the city's DEI statement. So I'm going to start with that.
We want to share with you Grand Haven's Diversity and Inclusion Statement, read by leaders and future leaders of our community.
The City of Grand Haven respects, values, and celebrates.
La ciudad de Gran Haven respeta, valora, y celebra los atributos características y perspectivas.
That make people who they are.
Únicos, que hacen que las personas sean como son.
Pillars of inclusion, diversity, and equity.
Los pilares de equidad, diversidad, e inclusión son vitales.
Are vital to a vibrant community.
Para una comunidad vibrante.
And we believe that bringing diverse individuals together.
Encouraging all voices to be heard allows us to build a stronger community.
Creemos que unir a personas diversas y alentar a todas las voces a ser escuchadas nos permite construir una comunidad más fuerte.
The City of Grand Haven upholds these pillars.
La ciudad de Gran Haven defiende estos pilares como cruciales.
As crucial to healthy people and a healthier community.
Para mantener las personas saludables y una comunidad sana.
And a big thanks to everybody who was involved in producing that video. Really pleased to be able to provide that each month as we meet. A couple of other actions for you to note. We do have a resource list. It's a very comprehensive list on the website. Jane Stoper continues to compile that. It includes books, videos, documentaries, young adult material, podcasts, basically all different kinds of material. It's a great comprehensive resource list. And we are starting a community book club. Wes McGee is leading that book club. And the first book has been selected. It is Birth of a White Nation. And it is available at The Bookman. So we encourage you to go ahead and pick up that book. And then in your post packet materials will be Wes's email address. He is in the process of surveying people to figure out the best time and date for people to meet. I wanted to pass on, we concluded a two-month conversation about race and the educational system. A lot of really great suggestions were made that needed to be filtered to our school districts. And so we packaged all of that up. And we sent it to the school board members at Grand Haven Public Schools, at Spring Lake Public Schools. We also sent it to a board member at Muskegon High School. We had panelists, of course, of students from all three of those, from those schools, plus Holland School. And we also sent it to the curriculum people in the ISD. So wanted you to know that all of those suggestions have been forwarded. And we're asking for those organizations and individuals to give us an update within the next couple of weeks. And then we've added something for you on our Town Hall Anti-Racism Task Force page. And that's a place where you can report the actions you're taking. So as you leave this Town Hall and then you take action steps, you can go and hit the button and record the actions you're taking. We'll be able to highlight actions during the Town Halls and let everybody know the work that's being done in between our conversations. Tonight, our conversation, as I said, moves to the justice system. And we have amazing panelists we're going to hear from tonight. Rick Stevenson is a doctor at the University of Florida. He's going to talk to us about the history of mass incarceration. Nathan Jones works in Holland at Escape Ministries. And he'll talk about the school-to-prison pipeline. And then Timothy Stewart has a podcast. This is a situation that runs in Muskegon. And he'll talk about his experience of being placed in the school-to-prison pipeline. A few things to go over first, our agenda. We start with the welcome, instructions, and polling. We hear from our panelists. And then we have a Q and A period. And then we go into our breakout sessions. I've said a lot about grassroots. This is where we get that grassroots feedback. So our Town Halls are not just about listening to speakers and going our way. It's really about letting the speakers welcome us into a deeper conversation. And then we have that conversation with each other. We'll have some end polling and talk about next steps. Couple of instructions, please stay on mute. And please try to keep your camera on. I recognize that there are times during our day that it's not convenient to have the camera on. And so you might want to turn it off when the speakers are speaking. But when we go into the breakout rooms, unless there's a real conflict with having it on, please try to keep it on. It just builds trust and a feeling of safety in those breakout rooms if you have your camera on. We do have closed captioning going on. So you can turn your subtitles on or off as you prefer. We did have questions submitted ahead of time. But as you have questions tonight, feel free to put them in the chat box. If you asked a question ahead of time and aren't hearing the answer, please put it in the chat box. If there are questions we don't get to tonight, we will ask our panelists to respond in writing. And then we'll get that material to you as soon as possible. When we're in the breakout sessions, you need to have the Zoom app in order to participate. So if you're working out of your browser, then you won't be able to go into the breakout rooms. And also, I wanted to make sure you know that while we're recording our speakers and our main conversation, none of the breakout rooms are recorded at all. As a next step, when we are done, we will have that recording and all the materials, the slides, anything that gets brought up tonight, all of that will be packaged and sent to you in a post packet. And the last thing, our communications and guidelines. So we always go over communication guidelines every time we have a conversation. And these are true when we're all together. And they're also true in the breakout room. First one is honesty. We don't get together to debate who's right and who's wrong, but to have a conversation where we can share our honest experiences and feelings and be willing to listen to the honest experience and feelings of others. We have speakers who do have wonderful expertise, but all of us are equal and valuable contributors to the conversation. All of us have preconceived ideas. And they can get in the way of our listening to each other. So we want to be aware of that so that we can really remain respectful and keep an open ear as we have a conversation tonight. We want to practice active listening, which is kind of a challenge in our current environment. We want to really task ourselves with listening instead of thinking about what we want to say. We want to take responsibility for our words and for the feelings that come up in us. All of us have hot buttons. They can get triggered unintentionally. If it happens, we want to be able to name it without blaming anybody for it. And finally, this is a shame-free zone. Shame never leads to constructive change. If anything, it just pushes negative thoughts and feelings and behaviors deeper underground where they continue to fester. We want to provide that safe environment where we can talk about what we're thinking and feeling and kind of process the stuff we've been carrying around with us without being ashamed for that or put down. We need to be able to unpack those things if we're going to be able to look at them objectively and decide whether we want to continue carrying them or not. So please refrain from any shame-based conversation tonight. Quick pre-polling question as we get started. First one is just how confident are you in talking about race and racism on a scale of 1 to 10? So if you would just select from 1 to 10 and then scroll down, and it says, is racism present in our community? Not at all, minimally, somewhat regularly, or always? And once you've made those two selections, hit the submit button. And we're about halfway there. So I'm going to leave it up for a few more seconds. Give you a few more seconds to answer. You do need to hit submit for it to be recorded. And I'm going to close it in five, four, three, two, one. So you can see kind of the measure of the room tonight. We have everything from having no confidence in talking about race and racism to being completely confident. And eight is kind of where the majority fall. And whether racism is present in the community, some people believe it's there only minimally. And 63% think that it's always there because it's a systemic issue. So with that, I am going to introduce Rick, Dr. Rick Stevenson from the University of Florida, formerly at Grand Valley. He's been a speaker for us before. Thrilled to have you, Rick. You have 10 minutes, and I will stop sharing my screen so you can share your own.
Thank you. Good evening. It is a blessing to be here. It's not snowing where I am. Thank the Lord for that. So the history of mass incarceration, racism, white supremacy, policing, and population control led to mass incarceration. Although Bakers Rebellion of 1669 is the beginning of policing as a means of controlling populations in the colonists and above backgrounds and native indigenous people, poor indentured servants, and especially poor blacks. Historians dealing with the history of the old South generally agree that the general interest in policing and regulating the lives of slaves began significantly in the 1830s. Get it out the way now. So Marcus Redeker in his book called The Slave Ship refers to slave vessels as a tall, powerful European machine that served at both the factory and prison. When we think about mass incarceration, we have to understand that the British had already begun mass incarcerating people as early as the 1700s. And so the slave ship is actually where mass incarceration really began to take place. Redeker points out that capitalism drove the transatlantic slave trade, and little concern was given to the capitalists and their expenses and root. History remains, reminds us that once they were aborted, these ships, the brutality was so immense that it took away the very sense of freedom, the very sense of the humanity, the very sense of what it meant to be a human. And that is exactly what we see when we talk about mass incarceration. Mass incarceration primarily is about not only controlling populations, but it is the dehumanization of individuals. Redeker says that the slave ship was a diabolical machine. And likewise, so is the mass incarceration idea. And so when we look at policing, we have to understand that policing is foundational to mass incarceration. Policing is a controlling of a population. With the rise of abolitionist agitation in the North, augmented by the fear of another neck turner rebellion in Virginia, many whites began to really get afraid. And they had to figure out, how can we control these slaves or these individuals who run away? And how can we keep them from overrunning our plantation? So many states in the South began to pass legislation that controlled slavery, that regulated slavery, and it controlled the population by creating what we now call police forces. But they also introduced this notion of gun laws. Because when we hear gun control today, we automatically assume that people are about controlling guns. When in fact, gun control is more about controlling populations than controlling guns. And it's also used as an instrument to increase the amount of people who can be incarcerated because the laws were put in place to keep black people, brown people, minorities from being able to protect themselves. And so I want you to understand that the true understanding or acknowledgement of mass incarceration begins with this whole notion of policing. The birth and development of the American police can be traced to a multitude of historical, legal, and political economic conditions. The institution of slavery and the control of minorities, however, were two of the more formidable historical features of American society shaping early policing. Slave patrols and night watchers were the beginning of the police departments, which eventually became part of the mass incarcerations, the mass incarceration as the idea of control. Now, what did they do to make sure that they could control these individuals? They passed laws that gave police and their surrogates the ability to not only capture people, but to take their lives. In 1662, they changed the narrative about who was free and who wasn't. If a woman had a child and she was a slave, that child was automatically a slave. When in fact, before this time in slavery, if a woman had a child, the child's social status was connected to the father. But the reason this is important is because one of the ways that they began to dictate the control on the plantation was making sure that whether the woman was free or not, their child was a part of the social structure. And if the woman was a slave, the child was a slave. And the plantation is the second form of mass incarceration. We move from the slave ship to the plantation. And then eventually, in the 1700s, I mean, 1800s, right after we get into the reconstruction, we have the convict lease system. The convict lease system serves as a system of incarceration where a person could be picked up off the street if they couldn't prove they had a job, if they couldn't prove they had employment. They could be locked up. They could be purchased by a major corporation and incarcerated to work for that company for free. And we move from the slave ship to the plantation to the convict leasing system to what we now call the prison industrial complex. The prison industrial complex is a financial system in America where the 13th Amendment is used as an instrument that says, even though a person cannot be maintained as a slave, the clause in the 13th says, unless they are convicted of a crime. And we move now from mass incarceration in regards to this convict leasing system to the prison industrial complex to private prisons and an organization called Alec. Alec is American Legislative Exchange Council, which oversees private prisons, prisons that are actually owned by people and by organizations. And so we move from the early 1700s, from the early 1700s to from slave ships as means of incarceration to now these buildings, these facilities that literally are holding hundreds of thousands of black and brown men all across this country. There are more people, there are more black and brown people incarcerated in America than anywhere else on the planet. We have, we have 14% of the American population is African-American, 65% of the prison population are black men. If you look at places like China, there are a couple of billion people. And yes, less than 28% of their population is incarcerated. And why is that? Because mass incarceration is not just about incarceration. It's about money. There are organizations like Sprint, like Walmart, Hertz, Sears, Whole Foods. These organizations benefit from the labor of these individuals that are mass incarcerated. And so we look at this movement from the early 1700s, where ships were used to incarcerate people, to the movement of Africans from the West Coast of Africa to America. I think I got three minutes. Where the plantation becomes the place of mass incarceration. Then you move into reconstruction, where now you have the convict lease system, where Southerns are now trying to regain their authority and their power. And they are creating all these laws and restrictions with Jim Crowism. And then we move from there to the prison industrial complex. And now we have private prisons where individuals and individual organizations are creating these systems of incarceration so that they can benefit from their free labor. And finally, one other company I wanted to mention is Victoria's Secret. I was doing some research on them. And I realized that a lot of their clothing are made, clothing in quotes, may be made in Honduras, but they're using prisoners to sew the labels into their clothing. The fires that were created, that were going on in California. Many of those individuals who fought those fires were prisoners. So the prison industrial complex has a number of different arms that reach into our communities. And we have to understand that it began with this whole idea of the plantation and slavery. But now it has exploded into a financial benefit for those individuals who have the ability to connect to organizations like Alec and the CCA. Thank you. And I still have three minutes.
Thank you so much, Rick. That historical context is so important. Really appreciate that. I'm gonna, now, I'm going to ask you to stop sharing your screen. And please, if you have questions, you can go ahead and start putting those in the chat box. We'll do all the questions after our presenters, however. So now I want to introduce Nathan Jones from Escape Ministry. If you want to unmute yourself, and you also have 10 minutes.
Yes, hello, everyone. Thank you for joining us as we take on racism and the justice system tonight. As previously mentioned before, my name is Nathan Jones. I'm a learning coach over at Escape Ministries here in Holland. And I'm truly honored to have been asked to speak tonight, especially on a topic I see every day in our community and our nation. I work specifically with the Alternative Suspension Accountability Program, or ASAP for short. Our program offers a space, essentially, for students who are suspended and expelled from school to experience peace, restoration, academic progress, and personal growth. Our vision at Escape is essentially intervening in the lives of those who've fallen between the cracks of existing educational, economic, family, and religious resources and help them successfully navigate a positive lifestyle through meaningful Christian relationships. So that's a little bit about Escape. So God has used every part of my life and every part of my past to form my future, to include an environment that not only supports its staff members when we falter, but to offer a place where those kids who are battered and broken by their pasts can be heard rather than ignored, embraced rather than passed on. My topic tonight will just be entering into the discussion of the school-to-prison pipeline. So when one thinks of a pipeline, the first thought that comes to mind is a transport from A to B, from one point to another. And you have two institutions of structure. You've got school, which is meant to be an encouraging, formative, and intended avenue to better your life. And then you have, or at least that's what, quote unquote, better your life. The other is prison, which cages those thought to be a menacing part of society. Out of the two of them, school is meant to be the safe haven, the place kids of all different races and cultures can go to become better versions of themselves. Or so that's what's intended. To a lot of kids I've talked to and accounts that I've researched, the schools are part of the problem, not the solution. And a lot of these examples. Now, that does not mean, I want to put it out there that I'm not bashing any of the schools that I personally know. I know that there has been a young man, young African-American man who I've gotten to know, who was expelled, actually, at an early age for possession of a weapon and aggressive behavior. From an early age, he was thrust into the role of being the man of the house due to his father being in prison. He had to help his mother so much, but had no one else around, no one else to talk to, no one else to relate to. He started getting involved in relationships with friends that might not have been the best influences. Started getting involved in gang relations. Carrying around protection was a means of survival due to those negative gang relations that were gunning for. Zero tolerance policy saw him labeled as the aggressive kid and had him issued out of school without even the option of trying to talk. This young man became an outlier of the system, however. His newborn son added a fire into making something for himself. And he continues to choose to be the father that his father never was. However, these situations most times than not end in a continuing, continuous cycle of court appearances and prison time, especially for those kids that continue to be surrounded by negative influences. His testimony broke me down because to see him pushed out, labeled, and ignored when he just needed someone to be present with him was far from what we should be doing as one people. And he was by no means the only one. Whether it's a lack of proper staffing due to budget cuts or just the inability to recognize when there is more to a story than most administrators are willing to give consideration or time in deciphering. The zero tolerance policies adopted by schools are pushing kids labeled as aggressive, bad-tempered, prom or problem kids into criminal lives. It is no secret that when it comes to examining the statistics of which students are more likely labeled the troublemakers and expelled or suspended for aggressive behavior. What I've noticed and what I've seen out there is that black and Latino minorities make up a majority of that population. But why do we think that? One of the most thorough books that I would recommend is The Trouble with Black Boys and Other Reflections on Race, Equity, and the Future of Public Education by Pedro Noguera. He explains further that schools typically justify using removal through suspension or expulsion by arguing that such practices are necessary to maintain order, an orderly learning environment for others. When you have those two distinct environments between a group of people that you deem peaceful, educational, those students that are meant to be in school versus those that are labeled branded the trouble kids, that doesn't do much for self-esteem. It does very little. Kids start to imbibe that. Kids start to take on those personas. If you're told or called something or made to believe that you're, because of whatever trauma you've been through, whatever past that no one is willing to talk to you about. If that's what you're labeled as, then that's the only thing you're ever good for. And that's the only lifestyle you'll ever take on. Acting out isn't something that is solely linked to Acting out isn't something that is solely linked to, to those races. I can tell you that firsthand. I see kids from all different racial backgrounds throughout the community doing acts that will ultimately result them being locked up. So why are statistics showing that kids from these backgrounds are essentially getting shoved out of schools more frequently than kids of my same skin color as me? One of the biggest problems right now in our nation, as we have seen with this past year, is that our nation, it's so easy to sweep issues under the proverbial rug. There is an underlying racial bias that is continuing to exist, especially in our school systems. The first way to, to solve a problem is recognizing that there is one. And yeah, one thing leads to another and you have something that brings up, stirs a lot of emotion. But how many examples of those injustices have occurred before and only now is getting noticed? How much have we as a nation swept under the rug? It is easier to push off those uncomfortable conversations and interactions with kids of different color. Let the zero tolerance policy blanket the reasoning for keeping them away from being in a positive environment and let the system take a hold of them and never let go. How many school systems, or for that matter, how many communities have taken the time to actively get on a one-on-one basis with those kids and open the lines of communication? Many African American or Latino kids have been raised or experienced trauma in their own lives that play into how or why they have acted the way that they have acted. So one of the biggest things that I'm never ashamed of talking about is that I'm actually a product of my environment. I was raised in South Africa. Came over to the US in two thousand and one. So I was a son of a pastor and my mother was a nurse of a post-apartheid South Africa. I was blessed with the ability and the situation that God gave to me of having parents that weren't racist, that weren't the, that preached, preached truth and reconciliation over hate and discrimination. Classrooms for me in South Africa were integrated. Didn't see the difference between black or white kids when I was in the schools. Everyone was in one classroom together and so there was never any segregation. When I came to the US, that's when I started to see how socioeconomic environments in lower income neighborhoods tend to reflect the school systems. And that's one of the most saddening things as somebody that is involved in these kids' lives, to see how, how big that neglection can happen and how easy it can happen if we aren't taking the time to open the lines of communication and have those uncomfortable conversations. I'll finish this up by saying that one of the biggest things that we have to acknowledge as community members, as well as people that are involved in our school systems, is that white privilege is a thing. It's not a myth. It's not some political party hoax. I came over three months after one of the most horrific and traumatic attacks on this nation. Xenophobia was running rampant. But I would be naive and stupid to think that my skin color didn't play a part in how easy of an immigration process it was for me and my family, at least from the eyes of an eight-year-old. I came to this nation without much of a problem when I know that somebody of a different skin color would have definitely had a lot more problems. Thank you, guys. If you guys have any more questions, by all means, let me know.
Thank you so much, Nathan. I know people have started putting questions in the chat box. I appreciate that. Our next speaker is Timothy Stewart and I am going to begin with, he wants to, he has a wonderful video to share first, so I need to just pull that up.
In sixty-five, shortly after the end of the Civil War, southern states sought to control their large populations of newly freed black people. Laws were passed authorizing the arrest and jailing of blacks. These laws became known as Black Codes. They typically applied only to blacks and criminalized acts that were not offenses when committed by whites. On November twenty-fourth, eighteen sixty-five, Mississippi passed a Black Code, declaring that all freedmen, free Negroes and Melatos found without proof of employment or found unlawfully assembling themselves would owe up to fifty dollars in fines and serve up to ten days in jail. As a result of Black Codes, the post-Civil War era brought American black citizens more contact with the criminal courts and prison systems than ever before. As the former Confederacy learned to use the criminal justice system as a tool of racial control, countless black men, women and children were convicted and sentenced under unjust laws that criminalized them for existing as free black citizens.
Institutional and systemic racism broadly refer to the system of structures that have procedures or processes that disadvantage racial minorities and particularly black people. It refers to the rules, practices and customs once rooted in law with residual effects that reverberate throughout society, each with their own nuances. A good example of systemic racism is redlining, a system once used by banks and the real estate industry that literally outlined the neighborhoods where people of color lived in red ink. If you lived inside of the red lines, loans were considered risky and banks were less likely to give loans or even invest. The practice was banned in nineteen sixty-eight, but the impacts live on, preventing black families from amassing wealth at the same rate as their white neighbors on the other side of that red line. Need proof? According to the Federal Reserve, the net worth of a typical white family is one hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. That's ten times greater than that of a black family. Homes in black neighborhoods are generally and historically worth less than white homes because the developers and businesses that make a neighborhood, well, a neighborhood, are less likely to be there. That means the tax base is lower too, which has a trickle-down effect. Less tax dollars for schools means fewer kindergarten classes, fewer qualified teachers, fewer AP classes. That leads to lower graduation rates from high school and even fewer graduates from college. This is in part caused by the school-to-prison pipeline that disproportionately impacts people of color. Institutional racism is more narrowly defined as the overt and covert forces blocking people of color from accessing the same opportunities as white people. Many of these children may benefit from additional educational and counseling services. Instead of getting the help they need, they're isolated, punished or incarcerated. Once you have a criminal record, it invades all aspects of your life. Getting everything from a job to an apartment becomes that more difficult. Many people believe their communities are overpoliced, presumed to be overly dangerous. But consider this, black and brown people account for thirty percent of the US population, but account for forty-three percent of people killed by police and more than half of the incarcerated population. Institutional racism goes beyond just serving time. Something as simple as hair can be used to discriminate. Rules at school and the workplace that don't allow for dreadlocks, cornrows and braids, they discriminate and don't take into consideration hair texture and singles out people based on their physical traits, creating rules where rules aren't needed, rules that control people of color. So who gets to make all of these rules in society? Since America was colonized, it's been white people who've made these rules. First with slavery, then Jim Crow laws and separate but equal rules, and even creating limits on who can immigrate into the country. The term given to define that power, white privilege. It refers to whites' historical and contemporary advantages in access to quality education, decent jobs, a livable wage, homeownership, retirement benefits and wealth regardless of socioeconomic status.
So Rick, I'm sorry, not Rick, Timothy, you have another five minutes or so. Please unmute yourself and continue your presentation.
Hello, hello, everyone. I am Bernard Timothy Stewart. And as the video, well, and I'm the host of a podcast radio show called This Is the Situation. I've been part of the Anti-Task Force Racism for a while and I played the video prior to me speaking because of this. My best inspiration or thought or example that I can give of a pipeline from school to prison is Ruby Bridges. If we think back to when she first went into school and she was sent to the basement to be taught by one teacher, to be taught by one teacher with a lot of rhetoric and everything going on above. So that she was not allowed it, allotted the same things that white children was allotted. And that same thing happened today. Given an example myself, I don't know how many of you have heard of Glenn Mills Schools in Concordville, PA, but it's one of the oldest existing schools of its kind. It's a youth detention center to where they corralled a lot of black people and people of color during my teenage years. From when we were committing crimes and they say, we're gonna give you one more chance at going to school and doing the right thing. And I was sent over to Pennsylvania and there I had a white counselor who decided to beat the thug out of me supposedly. He reminded me every day of why I was in the situation that I was. And I bring this up because of this. Today, in December twenty-fourth, twenty nineteen, that school was shut down. That school was shut down because of the abuse that was happening in the school to people of color and to black people. And I also bring that up because of this, the whole wide range of all of, the doctor who spoke before me and even Nathan talked about us having personal experiences with the system that has been created to keep people of color and black people from succeeding. And in the video that was played prior to me speaking, I tried to have them explain the best way that I could of the Black Codes, other rules that was placed on black people and people of color that put them in a predicament to be locked up like myself when I was young. I was told that if I completed the program, that my juvenile record would be a sponge and it would give me an opportunity to be productive in life as an adult. That was not true. When I came home, that still was on my record. And when I continued to get in trouble, because at that age, trying to get a job with a juvenile record painted a bad picture for me. And as most returning citizens coming home from prison today have the problem of having a job, being productive, sending their kids to school and doing this, doing different things is because the system labels us a convict, the system labels us a criminal. And having that on us coming home to be productive, we're owning a home to be productive, we're having a job. What hinders us is the pipeline from school to prison because my record was paid attention to from the age nine all the way up to twenty-one. By my record not being clear because I was a person of color when I was sentenced to prison for a crime that I committed, it took my security level from level one all the way up to level four. Where people that committed crimes, that was sometimes more aggressive than mine or less. But I want to end with this, the whole big picture of it, it's not about diversity. It's not about inclusion because we diverse and we're definitely included. Until the world begins to value black people and people of color. Our children, their education, their wealth, because I've been in county jail standing next to a white person whose family had money and who had wealth. And they said, please don't mess up my son's life. He'll get it together. When I had family members and parents who were dealing with untreated mental illnesses because of the history that's been given to black people. So I'm not going to take up too much more of the time, but that is how it affected me personally. And we can bounce back from that. And I want to make this clear. I was not and am not a victim of systemic racism. I was a recipient. I was a recipient of, because anybody that's black and anybody that is of color, every day that they wake up, they understand that we live in a world and a system that was designed for us not to be treated as valuable as the next person. So I believe if we begin to value each other as human beings, value the education of our children, value our economic security and folk more equity, things will be better.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Timothy. Excellent presentations from all three of you. Very, very grateful for your presence here. Jenna has been watching the chat box and also had the, the question submitted earlier. If you want to pose some question, you'll need to unmute yourself.
Okay, first questions for Rick. Is there a way that corporations can support incarcerated people with work programs to help people gain skills and experience without exploiting them? And what can we as consumers do to hold corporations accountable?
Yes, I used to go to, to the Muskegon Prison to do workshops. And when I first started going there, they had libraries. I have a friend who has a PhD, well, he's, he's deceased now. But he did his bachelor's degree and his master's degree while in prison. And so there was a time where a person in prison could at least get books. When I started going, the first couple of years back in two thousand and one, we could taste books. When I started going and when I got there in two thousand and four, they took the books out. So now they're not, they're not preparing people to be successful when they get, when they get out of prison because recidivism makes money. So the first thing we can do is we can challenge the prison systems to allow books and education back inside. Secondly, like we're doing in Florida, down here in Florida, if you have a felony and you've done your time, you can find employment, as Brother just mentioned. If you have a felony, you can't get a school loan, you can't get a housing loan, you can't get a car. So what are you going to do? You're going back to where you're accustomed, right? And so if you've already done your time, that felony needs to be put in position. The person needs to be put in a position where that felony does not restrict them from having opportunities of being, of being successful. And we can challenge that with when we vote.
Thanks, Rick. All right, Nathan, this one's for you. How do kids get referred to Escape Ministries? At what point in the pipeline?
So yeah, kids get referred to Escape, especially it's open to the community. So I know that I, for our ASAP program, that Alternative Suspension Accountability Program, they have to be not only in the vicinity, the neighboring high schools of around our town, but they also have to apply at our program. They have to talk to the administrators through that. They also have to have like an academic hearing with our board members. And they have to also accept the conditions that will come with being a part of the program, what the rules and expectations that we will have of them. And they have to come ready to, to learn to work. I've seen kids that are, one kid that came into the Escape Program and then we didn't understand, he was going through court processes, thought he was going to go for a little bit longer. The next day, I literally spent one day with him. Next day, he was in juvie. So I've had kids that are getting, we also do the after-school hours program for tutoring. We have career connections where we get the youth involved and get them jobs so that they can start to, you know, earn money for themselves and get employed into the community. Another member of the chat that you guys will hopefully also have a huge honor in talking more about too is AJ Westendorf. He is our ministry director over at Escape. And he'll be able to actually give you a lot more info too on that. But in terms of what point in the pipeline the kids are coming to, a lot of the kids are coming to us and I'm meeting, I'm personally, my day-to-day, Monday through Friday, are meeting the kids that are getting booted out of school. Because all, all of them are getting, that's what the program is. It's for the suspension and expulsion. So that they're, they're in the midst of going through that pipeline, getting rejected by the schools, getting pushed out and, and basically getting to the understanding that this is the only life that they're going to live. So that's the saddening part. So that's where we come in. So that's the sad part. So that's where we come in and that's where I, I encourage community members to, you know, go out and. Immerse yourself in the community, go to the community centers, go and do things around, get yourself involved at community action houses. Um, where you can meet, have one-on-one, get, get even talking to these, these kids and people, you know, just everybody. Being, that's how we learn to adapt and come together as a people. Uh, in my opinion, so.
Alright, thank you. And then, um, we have a question for both Nathan and Rick. Um, so Rick, if you wanna start, um, are any, are there any reasons why we want, would want to continue this practice? In our schools, what prevents us from ending this practice?
What exactly are you talking about?
That's a good question.
I'm assuming maybe like the zero tolerance policy? I'm not entirely sure.
Let me go back and see. Well. In the meantime.
I think that I would go ahead and answer that Nathan, the zero tolerance policy.
Well, from a school's perspective, I can understand like the lead, like the administrative, it, it sounds great. Being able to put an example out there for all the students that, hey, you don't do, like you do this. Now, if, if you do this, you're going to get this punishment. High theoretically, it gets a great practice. For the most part, it could keep people in line, but how are, like, how well is that keeping in line? What, what quality of communication is that really building not only for the school to student? But then the student's interpretation of themselves at the same time? And what value do they see? When a kid who had no intentions of hurting anyone or, you know, um, it's just a means of survival. Um, basic survival, protection of oneself, I think, you know, as, as somebody who, you know, is. Was raised a different type of way, yeah, bringing a weapon to school might be look, of course, it's, it's. It's not a great thing, especially because you worrying about, everybody's worrying about safety and all that. But to somebody who's been raised in a different kind of environment where. You have to, if you want, if you're trying to just basically survive. Um, then that's, you know, there was no harm meant. It's just that the way that they protect themselves and, and, you know, so having that conversation. Or the lack, like even having a one-on-one, being able to sep- separate them out if they're being disruptive or anything like that. Being able to separate the kids out and being able to um, get down to the root problems. Where I think would do a lot better than just shoving them out. Because what are they learning about themselves? What are, what are they gaining by shoving them out of the school systems? They're just gonna, a lot of the kids will just take it on like, okay, cool, it's. More time to go, you know, do whatever, you know, like, so. I don't, it's a theor- theoretically, and I know that also budgets play a lot into that, like how much could school systems afford? To get extra hands on deck, but I think that they, a definite adjustment at the very least to what needs to happen, so.
I just saw that, I just saw the chat Jenna, that the question was about. Um, so the question was about the resource officers, I wanna, I wanna approach it from two different perspectives. Uh, first of all, uh, a lot of elementary, middle school and high school teachers. Are teaching through the test as opposed to teaching students to think critically. And that's really important, right? Um, and, and so when you're teaching through the test, there are a couple of things that happens. One, we tend not to teach to a student's modality. And one of the problems when you have a disruptive student is not that they can't learn, you're not teaching them how they learn. Right? Some people are very kinesthetic, so they learn better when they have to put their hands to it as opposed to someone who takes notes. So that's, that's one of the problems. The second problem is the reason you have the resource officers is because the teachers can't control the students. And that's because oftentimes the students aren't getting any discipline at home. So that's a, that's a whole different issue, right? So we have to, we have to one take into account that some of these kids are raising themselves. You take some kids in Detroit, for instance, right? I, I, I've done presentations at high schools in Detroit. These kids, they haven't seen their parents all week long, right? So when they get to school, that's the only place that they have any kind of camaraderie. I think that the third thing is, um, that we have to introduce the importance of cultural competency. In our classes and in, 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 in teaching possibility. I just did a conference in Grand Rapids, Michigan. Uh, in Wyoming for their, uh, their administrative team. And we talked about the importance of being culturally competent. In the video we just watched, they were talking about hair. That that's a cultural issue, that has nothing to do with intelligence. And uh, if you're familiar and you might wanna look this up, uh, back in 1950, a, a, a team, Dr. Kenneth and Mamie Clark. Did this test called the DOW test. And the DOW test proved that young kids, by the time they were fourth, uh, third, third and fourth grade. Were learning to hate themselves because of the way they were socialized. And the DOW test was used by Thurgood Marshall to argue against Brown versus Board of Education, which was supported by Plessy Ferguson. And the whole point is this, that when kids come to school, especially young kids, and they don't feel that they're accepted, they're not going to learn. And then if you look at the fact that um, uh, Duwanda Kanjufu argued that there is a conspiracy against black boys. Prisons are oftentimes built based on how many black, brown, black and brown boys don't make it to junior high school. So there's a system. Right? And we have to understand that these systems um, are, are very active. And they're designed to make sure that a certain group of people never make it to the top of the realm of, 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 of education in society.
Thanks, Rick. And my, I did see that, like, my question got cut off in the chat, but thanks for everyone for the help with that. Um, alright, this one is for Rick and Timothy. Uh, what if the state kept criminal records from being accessible to the public? And were only available to courts and police for law enforcement purposes? So Timothy, if you wanna go first?
That would, that would be a help, that would be a, a big help. We gotta keep, can everybody hear me? Okay, we gotta keep in mind that um, we have, we're talking about the system. We're talking about the system, okay? And uh, not to get off subject, but. When we have police officers that live in our communities and police our communities and they pay attention to the children and they pay attention to us. They know what is happening. They know how we interact. They know how we engage with one another. But when we do not have police that are in our community, but drive to our community to work. They have that information that you're talking about now, okay? They look up your name. And if your uncle was in trouble or if your brother was in trouble. Then you're labeled as trouble if we're not dealing with an officer or a public person that's. Not trying to be segregated in what they're doing. So basically. If you did not show my record. Um, when I went to an employer to ask for work, I could get a job. You know, like when we talk in firsthand, your first, my first. Impression of me has to be flawless when I go to an interview and it always goes really good. And I'm, I'm confident and I'm qualified, but when it comes to the background check. After the background check, then there's like, okay, I'm sorry, I don't want to uh, invest or take a chance on you because. You have been a part of the system. You've been locked up before. So then I have a few choices to make. And hopefully, uh, we're making positive ones, but I do think that if our records were. Kept between just officers and the court system. Without them getting involved, it would be a big help for those who are trying to be productive in society and work for their families. And themselves.
Yeah, I think that Timothy hit it on the head. The problem primarily is. Even if the courts were able to hide the. The felony, there's an application process, there's a background, background check, you know? If you want, want to apply for a student loan, they're gonna ask you, do you have a felony? I, I run and own a fire, a fire on safety training academy. One of the things they have to ask people, do you have a felony? You know, so that question is oftentimes um, one of the instruments that is used to segregate these individuals out. Even though they could be great workers. I'll tell you another problem too, and I mentioned the, the fire, the firemen in California. There, there are some prisons that train prisoners to put out fires, but when they. Come out of prison, they can't be firemen because they don't get the EMT training. See, so they're still being, you know, used as innocent slaves because they can put out the fire. And then now they're skilled, but they don't have the EMT training, so now they can't get adopted to fire. So I mean, there's all kinds of loopholes that are put in place to prevent these people from getting back into the system. And that's because recidivism brings money.
You can't get rid of everything. You can't, you can't shut everything down, you know, the, like, uh, the, the doctor just said. If we cure everybody from addiction, if we cure everybody from committing crimes, then there's no money for prisons, there's no money for uh. NA, there's no money for AA. So there was a system implemented. If you tell a group of people that you're free. You don't have to do involuntary servitude anymore. But if you don't know how to read and you don't have an education, I will place you back into that servitude. And now the only difference is from then to now is. Like the doctor just said, when you look at my resume, it will say that I've been a product of the system. Not a victim, but a, a product of the system. So now that I'm a product of the system. Uh, personally, I don't want food stamps. Personally, I don't want Medicare. I want to take care of my family and I want to work on my own. But because of the system that was implemented years ago, that is so effective today. That hinders me and other peoples like me. To being able to be productive with buying a home, with owning a home, like the doctor said, with getting school loans. With even putting your children into schools, with even putting your children into different things that can help them out. Because of the parent having a record can affect their child. So if those things wasn't available to the public to get, so you can already have a tag on me of like, oh, he was bad. We talking about change. She was bad, they was bad, but let's keep in mind, when my mom was raising me, she wasn't dealing with her mental illnesses. Because that wasn't available to her. Because like I said and earlier, she wasn't valued enough. For things to be put into her. So I think that's important. I'm gonna always talk about equity right now. Because it's plenty of diversity and it's plenty of inclusion. We have to value each other. Uh, uh, people that don't look like us, that don't make the rules, that's not at, that's, that's not leading, that don't, that have the power. That are not products of the system. The system helps them. And I say that because if I was standing next to Nathan. In front of a judge for the same crime and Nathan has a family that's supportive and has money. They're gonna give him a break before they give me a break because I'm automatically tagged because of the color of my skin. The system. Did that. The system told a prosecutor or a judge because his uncle, because his cousin, because his father has records. It's not surprising that he has one too.
May I add one more thing to that, please? Do we have a minute?
Um, go ahead, Rick, and then we'll need to move into the small group, but please wrap it up.
Okay, as was mentioned earlier, after Jim Crow. Uh, the purpose of the black codes was the criminalization of blackness. It was, it became a badge. Of the people on the outside and especially in the education. When I was in ninth grade, one of my counselors told me, when I told her I wanted to be a teacher. That because my father didn't graduate elementary school and my mother didn't graduate high school, I wasn't good enough to go to college. That we didn't do well in college. Well, I had five degrees, two masters and two doctorates. But if my mother had not pushed us, that school system could have damaged me. And that happens to a lot of young black kids. We have these, we have these young teachers who come out of school. Uh, and they understand blackness as a criminal. It has nothing to do with intellect. It has everything to do with the way our skin color is perceived. And whether we want to admit to it or not, that is a fact, right? And until we get past that, we're always gonna have this problem, especially in the field of education.
Thank you, thank you. Um, wonderful Q and A period. I, I wish we had more time for this. We will, as I said, uh, earlier, any unanswered questions, we will send to our speakers and ask for a written response. Uh, within the next 24 hours, so we can send that out in the packet. So continue to put questions in the chat boxes you have them. Uh, we do need to move into the community conversation piece. So I am going to move you into break rooms. There will be a facilitator in each of the break rooms. Uh, and your first question is what have you learned tonight? Um, what, what new information did you hear? Uh, and I will just announce in the break room how much time you have for each question. You'll talk through the questions and then we'll come back and report. So I'm gonna, oh, and the other thing is, we always lose a few people. When we go to the small groups. So if you end up, um, you might get pulled out of one room and put into another room. So that we have more equal distribution. So don't be alarmed if you're suddenly transported to another room. Uh, I'm gonna open those rooms up now and I will see you back here shortly. Okay, whoa. Are you, are you recording now Jenna? You can hold up for a minute. Everybody. I hope you had really good conversations. We're gonna go around and call on our facilitators to share kind of a soundbite. Um, one insight, one learning, one question, one aha moment. That can be shared with the whole group. So we'll start. With group one, and Brian, if you wanna unmute yourself.
So, uh, pretty much our group says, we've been talking about this for a long time. And it's time for us to move past talking and to get into action. And in getting into action, we need to make changes. Uh, we need to make changes in laws. Uh, we need to make uh, changes in uh, supporting our single mothers. We need to make changes. In our courts and with our officers, understanding, uh, having better training and understanding implicit bias. But overall, it's time for us to move forward and talk isn't the way that we're going to do that. It's actually taking uh, actions with policies and laws.
Excellent. Thank you, group one. How about Holly in group two?
Um, yeah, the biggest aha moment was um, just learning the extent to which um, prisoners are forced into. These labor situations um, with very little pros to that, except that it's making a lot of people money. Uh, so um, talking about that, that um, and what, what a huge issue that is, that there's incentives for people. So dismantling that system is um, a huge undertaking. And then we also got a lot of great um, book recommendations from Dr. Stevenson. Um, really. Um, helpful. So I will make sure that those end up in the notes too for other people who want to do further reading.
Fabulous. Thank you, Holly. How about group three, Mary?
Okay, um, yes, uh, one of the things that we talked about was uh, the perception from um. In, in interaction with the justice system is uh, difficult at best. And, and this person spoke about bad apples and um, they're kind of emblematic of the entire system at this point. You say root out bad apples, but they're pretty emblematic uh, at this point. And then the other thing was if you put a good person in a bad situation. In the system will win every single time.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, group three. How about group four, Carolyn?
Hi, yeah, we had some great conversation for sure and one of the things that ended up being. Kind of the central piece here was that it's not necessarily always about diversity and inclusion, that's the problem. We have diversity and. We have diversity and inclusion. Barack Obama was president. I mean, that wouldn't have happened if we weren't, you know, diverse and inclusive. But what we need to learn as a society is the value of human beings. Once everyone has learned the value of, of human beings and valuing one another, like we value our own selves and our own families, we're going to be a heck of a lot closer to where we need to be.
Thank you. Thank you, group four. How about Natalie in group five?
Yep, my group definitely had great conversations as well. We also did bring up the value, um, we mentioned, don't be afraid to value each other. Um, we also talked about encouraging others to think, think differently towards justice. And then a, we kind of were talking about the history of all, and someone had mentioned that it's a reminder to them. And it was good, you know, talk about that. Um, someone also mentioned they were surprised that, um, books were not found in the prison system for education. And, yep.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you, group five. How about Monica in group six?
We had a lot of different ideas shared for the first question, um, a lot of just divergent ideas. Um, for number two, though, what we all really agreed with was that being white, our perceptive, our perceptions of the justice system is very different than if we were not white.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you, group six. How about group seven, Emily?
Thanks. We had a really good conversation. I think everybody was excited to share and, and talk about what we, what we saw in the presentations. The biggest thing that I think generated a lot of discussion in our group was some really good insight into ways that people in the justice system are, are looking to improve things. We talked about specific issues around cash bail, our efforts to make the justice system more therapeutic, which really drove home, uh, point another group mentioned earlier, which is action and paying attention to how our public officials and, um, how we choose to allocate our resources impact the system.
Yeah, excellent. Thank you, group seven. How about group eight, Gina?
All right, so, um, we discussed, uh, pretty in depth about mental health, uh, management, like, um, putting more mental health resources through all ages, starting at a very young age. Um, just having those readily available across the board. And then the value of having positive role models, um, that look like you, uh, like people, like teachers, doctors, lawyers, judges, people in high standing in your community that you can look up to that also look like you, that means a lot if you have that in your community.
Yeah, excellent. Thank you, group eight. How about group nine, Jamie?
Hi, um, my group was wonderful. A lot of book recommendations also. The primary, um, conversation that we had was, um, focused on the historical framework. Um, the discussion was centered a lot around, um, the context of issues today, um, impacting, you know, generational wealth, access to education, jobs, um, and trust within the, um, government institutions and, um, you know, treating people with dignity.
Great. Excellent. Thank you, group nine. How about group 10, Mary Jane?
Hi there. Our group talked about the magnitude of the true history of incarceration. And we spent quite a bit of time talking about the shock in the various aspects that we hadn't learned before. And then we talked about how we wanted to learn more and some of the alternatives and solutions might be learning about our own bias, how to prevent the, the pipeline and some education in prison would be most helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, group 10. And Greg, group 11?
Sorry about that. Yes, um, we had a great conversation as well. Um, uh, I think the big thing was we, we had some, uh, uh, members who were able to share some personal experiences where law enforcement was, um, was certainly showing up, uh, based on, um, a person's color in a way, drawing attention, um, if you will, to the conduct and behavior of people. That was, that was certainly only, um, uh, decidedly a factor because of race. And we wanted to affirm that that is in fact happening in our community as shared by this, this member in our group.
Thank you. Thank you, group 11. And, and thank you all for, uh, for engaging in that conversation and, uh, being vulnerable. Um, that, that's, is an action. So I appreciate that. Uh, we do have some post polling questions. So I'm going to throw these up. The first one is just kind of a repeat. Is racism present in our community? And then how comfortable talking about racism do you feel now compared to when you started? Uh, when we started the conversation? So if you answered those quickly, make sure you hit the submit after you make your selections. And I'm going to leave it up for about five more seconds. Three, two, one, and the polling. Uh, and so you can see, um, that we still have, you know, the majority of people believe that, that systemic racism is just systemic. Um, 55% of the people tonight feel more comfortable talking about race and racism than we started. So that's really, really encouraging to see a few people feeling less comfortable, um, which is even more reason to continue these conversations. The next question is just, uh, an evaluation of the meeting tonight. Was it helpful? Um, not helpful at all, made you more aware, motivated you to action or convinced you to, uh, become or continue as a leader or advocate? And again, we'll just use about 30 seconds to give you a chance to answer this. And about three more seconds. And we'll, and so, uh, this is really nice to see. Forty-two percent more aware, 38% motivated to action and 51% to continue as a leader or advocate. Oh, and I didn't share that. I apologize. There it is for you to see. And then the next one is about action. We keep hearing, yeah, the conversation, uh, conversation, I believe, is an action, but it's not the only action. We have to do more than just talk, um, or talk plus more. So here's some, some actions that you might be willing to commit to. Uh, reading, learning more, engaging in conversations about race and racism, engaging with conversations with people who are not the same race, participating in demonstrations, supporting DEI initiatives at school or work, attending implicit bias training. I heard that come up tonight. Get involved in local government, donate to groups that are working with justice, um, donate, uh, join the community book club, which is, we've started, and invite other people to town halls. And you can choose all of those that apply. You don't need to pick just one. And we'll just take a few more seconds because I see people are still, still logging in. And five more seconds. Two, one. So just give you a snapshot of what this looks like. Seventy-nine percent are interested in engaging in more conversations. We have learning. It's really exciting to see people willing to do something after the conversation. And then the next one has to do, whoops, with the next town hall. So would you be interested in participating in an additional, in additional town hall meetings? And what are your areas of interest? Now, I will tell you, as you fill this out, next month, we'll be talking about racism in the justice system. And the focus is going to be on the period of incarceration and the reality for returning citizens. And then our plan right now for April, the third month, would be to have local law enforcement as our panelists. So these, uh, options do not include the justice system because we're right in the middle of talking about that. And again, you can select as many as apply. Make sure you hit the submit button. And there's lots of responses still coming in, so I don't want to close it while people are still registering. Five more seconds. Oops, and then a whole stream came in. Okay, I'm going to end this poll. Uh, and 100% of those of you who answered said that you wanted to attend more racism and religion. Um, more than 50% of the group. And these are all topics that I, I'm sure we will get to in this series, but this really does help us to, um, prioritize. So thank you for participating in that. I wanted to just mention next steps. As I said, we've recorded this event. We have the, we have the slides that were presented, the videos, all of that. Uh, Rick, if you can send me your slide so we can include it in the packet, that would be really helpful. Um, questions that are still lingering in the chat box, we're going to send to our, uh, speakers so that we can get those answers. And then we send this all out to you within a week. We try for a couple of days. Sometimes we're waiting for some material to come in. Uh, so if everybody gets back to us within 24 hours, we'll have it out in a couple of days. Um, and then we will review your feedback. Uh, we have a meeting tomorrow, the anti-racism task force does. So we'll review all the feedback we get tonight and start planning next month in earnest. And then there's the next step that you can take, and that is to report in action. So, uh, all of us are in agreement, as I said, that, that it isn't, it's talking plus. Um, so it isn't about not talking. If we're not continuing the dialogue, we're, we're not going to get anywhere either. How do we talk and have action? Uh, and so there's an opportunity for you now to report what you're doing. You just said you're gonna, you're willing to do something. Um, what might that be? Go ahead and report that as you do it. And then we'll pick some of those to share. And we'll look at your examples as ideas that other people might want to do, might want to get involved in. Uh, and they might prompt the whole task force to take on new, um, actions as well. So please use that opportunity. I have a great big thank you to, uh, Dr. Rick Stevenson, to Nathan Jones, and to Timothy Stewart. You guys were amazing. Um, round of applause. This is where I don't like virtual because it's really hard for us to express how grateful we are in silence. Um, but really, really couldn't be happier. Uh, this is the, the task force again. And I have a special thank you also for my facilitators. And I also want to mention, any of you who've been participating in these town halls, if you're interested in becoming trained to be a facilitator, let me know and we'll get you set up for that. It's an opportunity to dive a little deeper into this work. Uh, next town hall will be Monday, March 22nd. It's always the fourth Monday of the month. Racism and the Justice System Part Two, Incarceration and Returning Citizens. So until next month, uh, again, you can send information, materials. We'll review them at the task force, but we'll be together in this format again in four weeks. Until then, uh, the divine in me recognizes and bows to the divine in you. Namaste.
Hey, Barbara?
Yes.
Um, so I don't think you should.